Good evening, everyone. This is the October 19th, 2021 meeting of the Town of Easton Meadow Planning Board. I am required to indicate that this is, this meeting is being recorded for playback by LCAT. And I need to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting. If so, would you please raise your hand? So you can be recognized and be brought into the meeting to let us know how you might be recording this meeting. Not seeing any hands raised. We'd like to do the, the roll call, and I can tell you those in attendance are Cassandra Sarah Swallow, myself, Russell Denver, George Kingston, member John Torsha, member Pete Punderson, Peter Punderson. And we are joined by the Director of Planning and Community Development, Bethany Yao, and joining her is our newest person in the Planning Department, Nina Fazio. So Bethany, do you want to just introduce Nina?
Sure. So this is Nina Fazio. She was our Conservation Commission intern working remotely last summer. And she has done some shadowing of the office over the, over this most recent summer. So she is familiar with the role and is a long time Easton Meadow resident as well.
Okay, great. So the first order of business would be approval of the minutes of October 5th, 2021. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the October 5th, 2021 meeting minutes?
A small move, George.
Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Cassandra Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
George Kingston.
Hi.
John Torsha.
Hi.
Peter Punderson.
Hi.
And I am a yes as well. So first item of business, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, so item number one, case SPRW 2021-46, request for site plan, site plan waiver for a home office at 24 Forest Hills Road, assessor's parcel ID 58-26-0 on a .46 plus or minus acre site in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Bruce LaRivere, 24 Forest Hills Road, Easton Meadow, MA.
Is the petitioner available?
Yes, I am here.
Okay.
I'm here, hello?
Yes, we can see you and we can hear you. Thank you. So we'd like to hear a little something about your business and what your, what the business is about, hours of operation, so forth and so on.
Well, I'm just trying to start a, a small handyman business. There's, it's just looking for a home office. It's something I do on the side. I'm a full-time firefighter in the city of Worcester, so I've been in the construction field most of my adult life on the side. I own a construction, landscape construction business. I shut down a few years ago. So I just wanted to start a little handyman thing on the side and doing smaller repairs and, and stuff. So there really isn't any, any business hours. There's, there's no vehicles or equipment or, or employees or customers coming in. It's really more about a home office.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
A small move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Torsha.
All right. Item number two, case SPRW 2021-47, request for site plan review for Easton Meadows Psychic, a retail store at 34 Shaker Road, assessor's parcel ID 27-156-D on a .44 plus or minus acre site in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Tina Marks, 34 Shaker Road, Easton Meadow, MA.
So the petitioner is soon to be with us. There you are.
Hi, how are you?
Good, welcome.
I am so new to this. I am so sorry. I don't even know what I'm, I'm so new to this. How are you?
I am well, thank you. So what we'd like to know is a little bit something about yourself, a little something about the business, hours of op, you know, hours of operation, um, you know, anticipated number of customers throughout the course of the day. Just start with that.
Well, um, I am here at 34 Shaker Road as right now. Um, we are trying to put some stuff in here, but uh, what I do is more like, um, not exactly almost psychic, but we do life coaching. We do chakra, uh, shopper readings. We do crystals, candles. We sell books, all kinds of stuff. Um, it's pretty much almost like the guy next door from, down the street from us, pretty much that kind of store. Um, the only thing we don't do is, is drink liquor. We're not, we don't do those kind of things. We're not going to be doing any kind of alcohols or stuff like that. Um, also, we're going to be selling terror cards. We're going to be also, um, how can I explain to you? Like just doing your normal business, average business. This is so new to me. I'm so, I'm nervous. You have to excuse me. I'm so nervous. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Um, the hours of operation are going to be from probably between 11 to 5.
Okay.
Um, we'll probably wind up getting between 3 and 5, sometimes 6. It all depends on how the traffic is. But in my office that I had in, in Massachusetts, we had between 8 and 10 people a day. And sometimes even more. It all depends if it's a summertime or wintertime less. And there's only going to be one person doing this, which is, is myself.
Yep.
Um, I'm not sure what else you want to be. Actually, I'm so sorry.
No problem. Questions from the board?
Is this where the photographer was?
Yes, he was. Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second that. It's a retail business in a retail building.
Yep. Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. Congratulations and best of luck to you.
So much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Wow. Thank you so much. Have a good day, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Item number three, case SPRW 2021-48, request for site plan review for at 37 Maple Street, assessor's parcel ID 27-18-0 on a .08 plus or minus acre site in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Jesse Baker, 37 Maple Street, Easton Meadow, MA.
So Jesse, you look like you're muted. Hello?
Hi there. Can you see me?
I can see a picture of you.
Okay, there we go.
That is nothing like the picture.
That's not the picture we saw.
That was me 15 years ago when I had hair.
I, I used to have brown hair too. Yeah. All right. So if you've been listening, we want to know something about you, the business, the location, hours of operation, what, what you're planning to do there.
So my wife and I are partnering. We're looking to open a rental salon at 37 Maple. I own a gym in Springfield. I've owned and operated it for almost 15 years now, and my wife has been a stylist for 17 years. And we're really excited to try and take my business sense and her, um, you know, talent as a stylist and open a salon at 37 Maple. 37 was previously a salon and has been vacant for quite some time now. And the hours of operation are going to be, um, 8:00 AM or I'm sorry, 9:00 AM Tuesday through Friday till 8:00 PM. And then Saturday from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM.
Where, where do you encourage your customers to park? Because there's no parking directly in front of that location.
Correct. I've, I've spoken to the landlord and to the other tenants in the building. There is parking to the side of the building. Steven Allen Jewelers, I've talked to. And we've discussed how to navigate that. And there is also parking, I believe, in the Walgreens parking lot that I, I'm pretty sure is owned by the town that they use for the baseball fields and for other activities across the street.
Okay. Questions from the board? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve? I mean, it is a, a salon to a salon, so this makes it, things a little easier. So do we have a motion, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm a I as well. Uh, best of luck. Thanks for choosing Easton Meadow. As you said, that property's been vacant for a while. It's nice to see that it's going to be filled.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you very much.
Best of luck to you. Mr. Torsha, next item, please.
All right. So moving on to public hearings, number four, case site 2021-10 at 30 to 34 Shaker Road, request for site plan review for the addition of a handicap ramp to an existing structure at 30 to 34 Shaker Road. Parcel ID 27-156-D on a plus or minus .44 acre site in the Business District. Applicant Martha E. LLC, PO Box 91199, Springfield, MA.
Is the petitioner available? They're on their way, Russ.
Okay, thank you.
Name didn't match up. Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
Matthew Tortrelli. Sorry.
So, um, can you tell us what your name is?
My name is Matthew Tortrelli. I'm one of the owners of Shaker Road.
Okay, just for the, for the audience, can you kind of let us, you know, give us a feel for what is directly around 34 Shaker Road?
Um, so sure. 34 Shaker Road has the auto shop on the right. It also has the subway on the left-hand side. Uh, I'm talking about adding a ramp in the back, which would also be 37 Prospect Street, which is the frontage there. cigar shop. If you look at from Prospect Side, it'd be on the right side, and then it has a salon and a little commercial building to the, um, left-hand side.
Yeah. So the ramp, the ramp is, is it to a specific building or is it, uh, putting the properties together?
Oh, no. It's, um, 37 Prospect and, um, 30 Shaker are one building. Does it have two road frontages?
Yep.
Um, so, uh, right now we have a tenant called Roots to End, which is a hair salon in the back. Um, we would be basically adding to their stairs, basically a ramp right there.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board?
Does that require a building department approval too?
Um, yeah, I did have, um, Kevin come out.
Okay. Okay, good enough.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Let me just say that I'm, I'm really happy to see that you're putting in a ramp, uh, because access is important.
So this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open it to the public to see if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. If you do, would you please raise your hand and you can be brought into the meeting? I don't see any. Don, do you have someone?
No, no, I don't see anybody.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
So, uh, without seeing anyone, um, interested in this, uh, speaking on this issue, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow. Ms. Sarah Swallow.
You're muted.
Hi.
Thank you.
Funny, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. So back to the main item. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this item?
A small move, George.
Do I have a second?
Come on, somebody.
I'll second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion, um, by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
And I'm a I as well. Thank you and best of luck with that project.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Take care.
You too.
Mr. Torsha, next item, please.
All right. Item number five, case SP 2020-11, 38 White Ave. Request for special permit for a family home daycare at 38 White Ave. Avenue, assessor's parcel ID 27-184-2 on a .23 plus or minus acre site in the Residency Zoning District. Applicant Jaleen Torres, 38 White Ave, now Easton Meadow, MA.
Hello. So you're up there you are. Okay, good evening. So I'm sure you've been listening. So we'd like to know a little something about you and about the business and the, maybe the number of children that you will, you envision being there on a daily basis, number of staff, so, and the hours of operation. So we could start with that.
Sure, of course. Um, I'm currently an outpatient therapist and I'm also reservist for the, um, Air Force. Um, the childcare will be a small childcare. It will only be six children, and I'm planning on connecting with, um, the New England farm workers. So for the children, we'll be getting transportation from them. Um, so they would be all coming at once. And then the other two would be coming, their parents would be dropping them off. Um, I have a two-car garage, so I'm hoping that I can use the garage as a drop-off only for it to be safer for the kids. And other than the garage, my driveway fits four cars, so it shouldn't be an issue in regards to the, the actual street.
Okay. Hours of operation?
It will be 7:30 to 4:30.
And Monday through?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Uh, Bethany, just this being a daycare, are, are there, with the number of children that she's indicated she's going to have, are there any other state requirements that we need to be aware of?
I think the limit for, um, for our zoning bylaws is six kids, um, for the home, family home care. So she meets that and, um, have you met with the Board of Health or is that a requirement?
Yes, I'm already licensed for it, so I did everything that I had to do prior to this.
Great. Okay. Questions from the board members? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to, to approve?
This is.
Hearing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, George.
It's a hearing, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, excuse me. Thank you. Uh, so I will open it to the public for, for comments on this, on this item. Anyone in the audience wishes to speak on the matter, please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting. Not seeing anyone, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? On the motion to close the public hearing by roll call, Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha. Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm a I as well. Back to the main item. Is there a motion to approve?
A small move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Again, any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. So by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsha.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow. And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Thanks for that catch, George.
You're welcome.
Mr. Torsha.
All right. Item number six, case SP 2021-10, 16 Meadowbrook Road. Request for special permit for the installation of a wireless communications monopole and related equipment at 16 Meadowbrook Road, assessor's parcel ID 78-1-0 on a 12 plus or minus acre site in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, 20 Alexander Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut.
So before I ask to hear from the petitioners, I'd like to ask our Planning Director for just a little bit about, um, we know that there was a meeting with the Zoning Board of Appeals last evening, so first speak to that. And then if you could speak to some guidance that we've recently received from Town Council on this item. So Bethany?
Sure. There was a zoning, um, appeals meeting, uh, yesterday evening. It was rescheduled to November 8th, um, because there was, um, not a full board present, um, and they need a super majority of the board members to vote, um, for variance applications. Um, so that leaves the special permit hearing tonight with the Planning Board. A little bit of background as far as, um, this application. There is a telecommunications act of 1996, which was established to deregulate the health communications industry and to allow for the expansion of new technologies. The act preempts some of the local government traditional zoning authority. So there are limits to what the Planning Board, um, can do in respect to this special permit.
So can you speak to the issue of, um, with respect to dead zones for cell coverage and its impact on any, any position the Planning Board takes?
Yep. Um, so the Planning Board is not required to consider the telecommunications act, um, but they are permitted to do so if they choose. The applicant has to show that, um, the denial is not based on substantial evidence. And they also have to show the denial of this application, um, constitutes an effective prohibition on wireless towers. So that's in a scenario if the Planning Board denied the special permit. The applicant has to prove that the denial prevents the closing of significant gaps in the availability of the wireless services. They also have to prove that further application and reasonable efforts to the town would be futile. For example, there are no other locations permitted under the bylaw that would address the significant gap in coverage. The burden is on the applicant to show that there is a significant gap in coverage and there is no alternative location for the tower that would remedy the gap under the act. The board should certainly require similar proof from the applicant in the instance if it intends to rely on the telecommunications act as a basis for granting the requested relief.
Okay. So we could do such things as require that, um, it be fenced and properly landscaped and, and that as well as a condition. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I believe that is part of the plan that they are presenting tonight.
So before I do open it to petitioners, does any board member have a question of Bethany on what she just said?
Bethany, um, regarding access to the tower, am I correct in saying that it's going to be on the left rear of the property?
Uh, it will be coming off of Meadow Brook, I believe.
Okay, so is it, it's the rear of the property, though, on the left or the right side?
Right. The pole itself will be located in the rear of the property. The access road will be coming off of Meadow Brook Road.
Okay. So the access road, does that have to be a semi-imperious material?
Um, I don't think it's required to be, um, but in this case it will be.
Okay, okay. And we did receive, uh, as part of our meeting package this afternoon, notes from DPW. They indicated that, uh, additional items need to be listed or corrected on, on the site plan that was submitted as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. I have a question. Um, we talked about significant gaps in coverage. Does that include level of coverage in terms of type of service that's being provided? Do we know that?
That is a good question. Um, I think Attorney Fenton might be able to answer that as it's more his expertise.
Yeah.
Man, specifically thinking about 4G versus 5G.
Yeah, okay. I think when we get into the presentation, Mr. Punderson?
I can vouch for there is a gap in coverage right now, and still many other people live around me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to now open the floor to the petitioner, who I believe is represented by Attorney Michael Fenton. Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Michael Fenton. I am a partner at Schatz, Ford, and Fenton in Springfield. Our address is 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100, Springfield, Massachusetts. We are here tonight on behalf of Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. And we have the full complement of Verizon's consultants and teams, uh, team members here tonight, to put a thorough presentation together for the board, to hopefully meet the standards that the town planner was just describing under both the zoning bylaw and the telecommunications act. So, uh, if I may, I would like to, uh, request that the team members who have raised their hands be admitted, um, as participants into the Zoom at this time. That would be David Vivian of Structure Consulting Group, uh, Gregory Seeker with Chapel Engineering, Kip DeVito, who is a radio frequency specialist and engineer with Verizon Wireless, Michael Libertine, who is our photo simulations expert with All Points Technologies, and then my two colleagues, uh, at Schatz, Ford, and Fenton, Attorney Ellen Freiman and Attorney Stephen Sobe.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, full disclosure, I am a client of Schatz, Ford, and Fenton, but I do not think that I deal, have dealt with any of those lawyers, and I do not think that that will influence my decision. But I just want to make it clear that, um, full disclosure, I am a client of them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Fenton, Mr. Fenton, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I am going to, um, turn it over to my partner, Attorney Freiman. I, uh, have, I'm going to remain on the Zoom, but I do have a conflicting appointment that begins at 8 o'clock, so in the unlikely event that I have to, um, leave, I'm turning it over to Attorney Freiman so she can handle the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Freiman.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Um, I'll introduce our team members who are here. We have Kip DeVito, who is the Verizon's radio frequency engineer. Greg Seeker is with Chapel Engineering, and he will go over the plans. Dave Vivian is, uh, with Structure Engineering, and he is the, um, site acquisition consultant. Mike Libertine is with All Points Technology. Um, and, uh, and you met, um, also Stephen Sobe will be helping with, putting up some of our drawings that we need to, uh, share with the board and with the public. So, uh, as everyone knows, we're here seeking a, a special permit to erect a 125-foot monopole at 16 Meadowbrook Road. This is an area of town, which as you will hear in more detail, it has poor and unstable service. And after a long search, um, it was deemed that this was the most suitable site, uh, given the area where we needed to locate a tower. I'll give a, a brief overview of, um, of information relating to the tower, and then, uh, will be followed by, uh, a review of the plans and a review of the coverage needs, and then we have photo simulations, uh, that were, uh, submitted with the application, and we'll show those to, to everyone.
Thank you.
So, um, so I'd like to put up the zoning, um, map for the town, because I just want everyone to understand, um, what our challenges were. Um, in the, uh, according to Long Meadow or Easton Meadows zoning, uh, bylaw, we can only put up a tower in commercial, business, and industrial zones. So that's, um, the tan area, the light blue area, um, and a purple. So we have, we're limited. So all the whole entire area that you see that's white and red and yellow, those are all residential zones, and we can't put a tower in any of that area. So, um, under the bylaw, but you, as you heard, the Federal Telecommunications Act does have a, a provision that says that a town can't prohibit service. So we, if we were precluded to, from, uh, putting it in that area, there would be no service in most of the town. So that's why we're going to the ZBA to ask for the variance to allow us to put the tower in a residential zone. So, um, we can't do anything until we get that variance in addition to getting the special permit that we're here tonight. So it's a two, two-pronged process that we're, we're doing. Um, and as I was explaining, we're also, uh, we've also asked for, um, some setback variances because, um, we're, based on those. We're based on the, the shape of the site and other conditions relating to the site. We do not meet all of the setback requirements.
So could you just put the arrow on, on the property in question? Okay. Thank you.
So when we're looking for a site, it's a long, arduous process because there's so many requirements that Verizon has for the tower. It has to be able to hand off the signal to other towers that are in the vicinity and have a clear line of sight. There's also topography issues, sightline issues, title issues, environmental issues, visual impact. So a lot goes into finally identifying a suitable location. So having gone through this process and which is a year, multi-year process. We did, and plus having a, you know, finding a property owner that's willing to, allows to. Put a tower on their property and being able to negotiate a lease. It, it takes quite a long time and we, you know, it's, we, we were fortunate that we're able to find, find a suitable location in this case. That is a really ideal one for solving the needs of, you know, for bringing better coverage to that area. So also I just want to point out that, you know, although you do see towers, I mean, they're not invisible. You know, there's no noise, there's no lights, no traffic, no odor, limited access. We have a technician that comes once a month to check it out and which is really. The, the benefits outweigh any of this negligible, any impact. Or adverse impact because of the safety issues, people working from home now, businesses and just enjoyment. You know, that we need from, you know, having and relying on good cell service. So I'd like to call on. First, we'll have Greg Seeker go over the plan so you can see in more detail. Where the tower is going and the access road and answer some of the questions that you had brought up.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Would you like me to share a video? Cause I'm perfectly fine doing that if you needed me to.
Yes.
Please. All right, let me see here. Start the video. My apologies, I had some computer issues getting started here. Um, so does everybody have the plans in, in front of them, first of all?
So because we're in a Zoom situation, we would like you to put them up on the screen?
I don't have that, I, I don't have the ability to do that. If someone can, can assist me with it from, from. Back there, we go. Okay, good. So if you can, I mean, that's just the cover sheet. If you could skip to sheet CO one. You'll see where the, where the existing, the subject parcel lies within, within the town. Okay, um, yeah, you'll see where the subject parcel lies within the town. We've given a few radiuses from the center of, of the pole. The, the, the one being two hundred percent of the tower height. The part, you know, they, the installation is to be located kind of in the northeast corner of this, of this lot. And the lot is basically kind of an open field at this point. So skip over to CO two. And all that does is zoom into the actual site, the actual subject parcel and give you a little bit of a better idea. Of, of how things are lining up on that parcel. There's an existing utility pole located on the south, southeast corner of the, of the parcel. And our intent was to bring public utility, you know, because we need to bring fiber telephone service. And primary electric service all the way back to the compound. Currently, the, the parcel is improved with a single family residence, which I believe is being used as a, as a rental. So the access to the, to the compound was going to go off of the existing. Driveway that they have there and kind of branch off and hug the easterly line of the parcel. Until it got all the way back to the, to the corner where the parcels be, I'm sorry, where the installations didn't be located. The utilities were also going to ride along that eastern edge of the parcel underground. They were going to be going underground. We anticipate needing to put another utility pole on the, on the southeast corner. So that we can, we can pick up the public utilities and then from there up to the compound going underground with all of the, all of the utilities. And you go into sheet AO one. This is an enlargement of what we call the equipment compound, which in this case is a fifty foot by fifty foot fenced area. That houses all, that houses the tower and initially Verizon's equipment. There's space for what they call future co-locators. So the tower is typically designed to accommodate not only Verizon but future co-locators. Same thing with the ground space and the same thing with the electric that gets pulled up to the compound. The, the electric provider doesn't like to pull power to it over and over again. So they pull enough initially to accommodate your other carriers, your T-Mobiles, your AT&amp;T. So if anybody would like to go, you know, anyone else wants to go on the tower, it's a lot easier for them to do so after it's installed. You'll notice that we have screening trees around the compound to kind of hide it. And Verizon for this particular site is calling out for a generator. They'd like to install a generator, which is also contained within the fifty foot by fifty foot compound.
So I, I didn't hear that last comment. So is it fenced as well as?
Yes, yes, it'll be, it'll be fenced and there will be screening, the screening trees around it as well as the fence.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So and the fence is just eight feet and like I said, around it, you got, you know, they, they plant evergreen trees. So are there any questions so far? I didn't, I'm kind of going quickly, but are there any questions so far?
It's not a shy group. They'll raise, they'll, they'll jump in if they have questions.
Ten four. All right, so we can skip to AO two. This one is only going to just show you some typical details. Of, of, you know, what's going on within the, within the compound. You'll see our fence detail on the upper left. Planting details in the lower right. This is kind of a little bit, a little bit of fluff in here. Some, you know, there's gravel within the compound. I mean, they're pretty typical. Pretty typical installation. Nothing really, nothing really abnormal about this location. The terrain at the compound is very forgiving as well and really throughout the, the entire site, it's pretty flat. So if you can go to sheet AO three, that'll show the elevations. We have two elevations, one from the front of the compound and then another from the side. And I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm sure that a lot of you have seen these before. And we're showing Verizon on top and then, you know, space for another co-locator, you know, below. It's not really up to us to predict who would come on, when they would come on, what they would install. But it is kind of our due diligence to make sure that the pole and the installation as a whole can accommodate multiple carriers in the future. So that, you know.
So the total height is how much?
The total height is a hundred and twenty five feet above grade level.
Okay, so can you, can you speak to why it needs to be that high?
Um, that is a Verizon Wireless request and that's kind of an RF question. I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a reactive mode with that instead of proactive. I don't decide how tall it is. I just. And told of how tall they need.
Yeah, the RF engineer Kip will go into that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on, sheet RF oh one. Is more or less kind of a blow up of the top of the tower where Verizon would be installing. This is kind of gives people an idea of, you know, how it's, how stuff is installed and, you know, the equipment that's used. It's a, it's a tri-sector mounting frame. So it's, that's, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory. Like I said, it's basically an enlargement of the top of the tower. Um, moving on to sheet RF oh two, which is the last sheet. This basically just kind of gives a rundown of the equipment that Verizon intends to install, that the size of it, the dimensions, the weights. You know, it's, it's pretty, pretty standard. Pretty standard stuff. In the upper left, you'll see their antennas. In the lower left, you'll see what they call remote radiohead units. And then those basically go behind the antennas. And then in the lower right, there's what they call a fiber junction box now that everything is on fiber and no longer on copper. So, I mean, and all that, all the, all the stuff on the bottom basically gets installed behind the antennas up on the tower. And then the antennas, of course, are kind of your face.
Do any members of the board have questions before he ends his presentation?
I would like to go back to sheet C one for a minute and just point out the, the setback. So from where the, the tower is, but maybe. Maybe there's a sheet two, two other sheets that are, do have a mark. Okay, let's look at this one. So. Nope, sorry, go back because I want to show it. Six hundred and forty feet from the nearest residence. Okay. There you can see that. But then, okay, so then you can zoom in a little bit. So as far as the setback, the square is the compound. So that's the fifty by fifty foot, foot area. The tower is actually to the back of that, away from the property line, pop property boundary. Yeah, the tower is right there. So when we had to measure the setback, we have to go from the outside of the compound. So we have, it's a hundred and five feet to the side, to the rear and a hundred and five, a hundred feet to the side yard. The requirement is two hundred and fifty feet, which is twice the size of the tower. Presumably, you know, that's kind of an arbitrary number. Every town has a different setback amount. There's no magic to it. But if their concern is originally, I think the concern was, you know, towers falling, which, which, that's such a rare occasion. But plus they're designed and it's a requirement of the town that it's, it's designed with a snapping point in the middle so that it would collapse on itself. But even if in the worst scenario it were to fall over, there is enough, there's more than a hundred and twenty five feet from where the tower is to the property line. So it wouldn't fall outside of the property line. So again, we don't meet the two hundred and fifty. But if the concern was where it would fall, it would, it would not fall into anybody else's property. So I just wanted to point that out and that's part of our request to the ZBI.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just had a quick question. So just in that vicinity between those, those three houses that are pointed out. I, I know some of that area is cleared to the south, but between those houses, is there vegetation there or is this open land? Would the, would the residents of those houses be able to see the, the tower from there? Or would it be obstructed by, by trees or other vegetation?
I know that properties to the north are fields and agricultural, cultural uses to the east is another farm and a residence. So someone else might know, but I mean, six hundred feet is pretty far. And I have a tower that's about less than two hundred feet from my house. And because of, it's just, it's, you can't see it, but.
The, the, the parcels to the, to the north are, are wooded. Basically, the, the property line is pretty well defined along, along the northerly edge where it goes from a field. To, to a wooded parcel. And then those, those houses are, when you look at your, your line of sight, you're not really looking across those woods. You're looking straight up at that point. So it's.
We have photo simulations that we're going to share as soon as we, after we talk about the radio frequency. So you'll get a better visual and, you know, understanding of that.
Thank you.
So now I'd like to have Kip talk about the need for the tower.
If, if I could just point out one thing before we go on. We're talking about the, the adjacent parcels being wooded or agriculture. Given development patterns in town, that's unlikely to be maintained into the infinite future. And the development value of the adjacent parcels is something that we need to be concerned with. Just because the houses are now six hundred feet away does not mean that twenty years from now, somebody will want to put. A development in there that will have houses that were within that two hundred and fifty foot circle that you're showing there. So my point is that the fact that the adjacent parcels are not developed now. Does not really impact the visual effect of that tower. That there may in the future, if there was no tower there, be development. And the presence of the tower may or may not affect the value of that land for development. And I just want to make that point.
Thank you. Ms. Freiman?
Um, Kip will explain the need for the tower from the RF perspective.
Good evening. My name is Kip DeVito, our engineer at Verizon. Can you hear me?
Not really perfectly.
No. You wouldn't be on the Verizon commercial.
I'll try and hold my phone closer. Is this better?
A little.
Okay, I'll try and speak up. Would you like me to share my screen and go through the necessity case or?
Please.
Okay. So can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is the, the front page of our proposed East Long Meadow two site. And this is obviously a bird's eye view of where we're proposing it. And as you can see, we're mostly equidistant from the surrounding sites. And as you can see, most of the residents in this area are being served from these two sites that are actually out of East Long Meadow. So you could see, you know, for the most part, that the need for, for a site in this area. So like I just said.
So can you go back to that in a minute? So what's the closest tower in East Long Meadow? Where is that located?
The near, well, right now, the residents here are being served from a tower, our site outside. I think it's Hampton West Two in East Long Meadow. I'm not sure how far away our East Long Meadow Tower is, but it would be this one to the west. And then we have another site that's actually in East Long Meadow, but it's titled Long Meadow Two.
So can someone read, can you read the roadway the current one in East Long Meadow is on? Can you expand that picture?
Um, we know.
I believe that's the water tower.
Is it? Okay.
Yes, it's, it's the water tank.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And I think the other one is Benton Dry, might be Benton Dry's, the other.
Okay.
So in summary, our proposed site will have multiple facets. It's going to provide a more reliable experience for the residents and for its responders in the interior. Like I said, it's being served or the area is mostly being served by our Hampden West Two site. That's approximately a mile and a half away. This site will serve to fill in a coverage and capacity gap. So not just the lack of coverage, but the, the inefficiency of the coverage that is there. Some of these slides are educational in the terms that we use often. So I'll explain as we go about coverage and capacity. But if needed, you could look into these more thoroughly, like sectors. It'll be a three sector site. You often see towers with antennas, bases. These are what we call sectors. And we refer to them in the Greek alphabet like Alpha, Beta, Gamma. And these are the azimuths that they'll be pointing, twenty degrees, a hundred and fifty degrees, two hundred and seventy degrees. We'll get into some coverage maps. This explains how we use them and how we'd model and predict RF propagation. We'll talk about capacity. So not just the lack of coverage, but also the coverage that we have. Able to handle the needs of the residents. There's a couple of slides that you could, from third party. That talk about the growth in wireless demand and RF safety. And then we have our coverage maps. So this here is seven hundred megahertz, which is our, what we consider our coverage layer. This is what, what gets you on the network. Green in the legend here shows you reliable indoor service. Yellow is reliable in vehicle service. Gray would be considered reliable outdoor service and then the gaps in between there are unreliable service. So as you can see in our proposed site here, there is less than adequate indoor reliable service. And we have no other sites in actually this part of, of East Long Meadow. And so you could see here that this site would bring. Or a, a much improved service level to this part of East Long Meadow. This is our site, post-site alone. This is our site, post site alone by itself with all the other sites turned off. Um, so you can see just, just this site. This is our twenty-one megahertz or also we refer to as AWS. The color scheme is the same. And this is a layer, um, that's more for capacity. So seven hundred gets you onto the network. Um, AWS, um, much higher frequency. So it attenuates more with, uh, you know, trees and topography, buildings, but i- it's more of a capacity to help you stream faster and things like that. And as you can see, um, currently in East Long Meadow, there is very little capacity service in the town. So adding this proposed site would help out greatly. And this is the site itself alone in, uh, AWS or twenty-one megahertz. Yep, I was. This is the network performance. Uh, to summarize this slide, it's really just, um, the key takeaway here is the more people you have on a cell site or a sector, the degraded, the more degraded the service will be. So, um, the two, the two KPIs here, key performance issues are average connected users. And then there's the average, uh, user perceived throughput. So it's just the more, the more users on a site, um, the more degraded their service will become. So that's also why we're trying to add this site, not just because of the lack of coverage, but the other sites are being strained to pick up the slack, um, without our proposed site.
Before you go there, so are you telling us then that the other cell sites in the area are, are providing further degraded service to users in those immediate areas as well? Because there's so many, because one cell tower is, is providing service to so many people?
Yes, sir. Actually, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was gonna say that next, that when other cell sites are, as we say, gassed for capacity, um, they can't work as well as they could. So if you add another site to the network, then the sites in the surrounding area are able to work better and better serve the, the, the residents and users in those areas.
So for the cell tower that I believe Ms. Fry, or Attorney Fryman mentioned is on Denzlow or Benton. So that potential, the service for those businesses in our industrial area, uh, have degraded service because there's too many users on that site or on that cell tower?
Correct. We would be improving services around the town and actually in the surrounding towns as well, especially in Hampton.
Okay, thank you.
And then next couple of slides talk about how, um, we looked at other structures in the town of East Long Meadow, um, because naturally before we ever, uh, try and build a brand new site, we look around to see what we can co-locate on. Um, so this slide here is just, uh, a search I did in the SEC database that found no other towers in the search ring that we were looking at. And then also the next slide is other structures in East Long Meadow that we looked at, like, um, the fire department's tower um, and other structures around town that we considered, but for one reason or another, we were unable to use for our search ring in this area to solve our problems here.
So you, you show the First Baptist Church. So I might be dating myself, but, um, many years ago, they were initially put in church spires. And there wasn't, th- there's not another property close enough to use, to use a church spire?
Um, I don't know if I have the history or know the history of the First Baptist Church there.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, uh, this is David Vivian. I'm the site acquisition or the leasing agent, uh, and I can, I tell you that, um, we did, uh, and it predates me, but we were in discussions with the Baptist Church off of Parker Street, uh, for some time. Uh, but, uh, the steeple there is, is quite short and would not, i- it's almost a tree height. We were at the time proposing a cell tower there. Uh, I believe that, uh, a, a new pastor came in and they, uh, they essentially then, uh, declined to move forward with our proposal there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Um. So really to the end of, of the presentation, I know there was a question that you had about the height of the tower. Um, in the previous presentation, why one point, uh, hundred and twenty-five feet? Um, so when we design a site, we try and, um, we try and design it to the best cover the needs of the customers in the area to go as high as possible. Um, but we also try and take a balance with the aesthetics of it as well as to not put in too high of a tower, but just high enough to get the right coverage that we need. So with our, our antennas being at a hundred, what we would call the center line of a hundred and twenty feet, it would bring or improve service for this area, um, for our needs here in this, in this area.
And how many, how many, what's the approximate number of residences slash, uh, people in those residences would have improved service from that, from that specific tower?
Um, I don't have the numbers of, of, of the population at, at hand now.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Fryman, do you have additional presentation?
Yes, um, Mike Libertine is going to go through the photo simulations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna get my video so you can see my face. And if somebody from, um, chats and Schwartz could put up the report. We have submitted a visual assessment, which is a combination of photo simulations as well as some computer modeling. I'm going to focus on the shots because I think everyone's really interested in, um, what this is going to look like. What I'd like to first, uh, just let everybody know is that the intent is to really show, uh, the extent of the visibility and then the character of the views. And that's what this report pretty much steps through. If we could scroll down to the photo log, um, I guess it's probably five or six pages down, uh, a little bit more will be the first graphic. Thank you very much. What we try to do is to frame where this tower will be visible and where, uh, it, the visibility does drop out based on a combination of topography and, uh, tree cover. Just to orient everybody, the site is, um, generally centrally located. It's a little bit to the right in this photo, just to get, um, the scale correct. The dots you see are photo locations that are referenced within the report and in the simulations we're going to show in a few minutes. And the color combinations we use, if the shots are a visible shot, we show that year round visibility in a yellow. Uh, an orange dot means that it's a seasonal shot so that when the leaves fall off the trees, there are views of at least a portion of the facility. And then the black locations are areas where the tower would not be visible. Um, we have several photo simulations. I think what I'd like to do is just generally before we show those, just tell you that the overall footprint of visibility extends approximately, the primary area of visibility is approximately about a quarter mile around the site. There are some areas you'll see that are what are more or less outliers. Fourteen and fifteen are locations to the southeast and those are, uh, extending uh, down to, uh, about just less than a mile away. And number forty-two off to the west or southwest of our site is over a mile away. And there are simulations that the visibility, uh, at distance tends to drop out, um, quite a bit in terms of being a focal point on the Verizon. So it's the near view shots that we tend to focus on. And, uh, as I said earlier, everything, uh, that we're going to be looking at, I'd like to start, I think, um, probably with the series up around the high twenties and the thirties because there was a question about those properties to the north. And I, I would like to depict some of those shots. Um, so maybe if we start with, um, perhaps number twenty-nine, thirty in that area. And where, where we are looking at, uh, in that area to the north is on Frazier Drive and that area. Um, so this is a, a first shot, uh, at the end of the road where it is not visible as we move, um, towards, uh, the site itself, a little bit to the south, you'll start to see it coming in. So if we could go to number thirty, that's, we do a balloon float. The balloon is flown at the height of the proposed facility at the site location itself. It's flown and tethered at a hundred and twenty-five feet. It's approximately a four-foot diameter helium-filled red balloon. The bottom of the balloon represents the top of the tower. And, uh, as you can see, we did this right before the leaves really fully broke so that we could get a good understanding of some of the, uh, winter views, uh, that might be achieved. We then simulate the tower itself with Verizon's array at the top. And so again, that's about, uh, two tenths of a mile away. If we go to the next view, this is one of the closest views at the end of Fra- Frazier Drive at the cul-de-sac, uh, looking back. And that's about, again, uh, almost two tenths of a mile away. And one of the reasons I wanted to just address this because I know there was a question about the intervening property to the north of our site, which is an open, uh, field, agricultural field. But as you can see here, there are intervening trees, uh, on the edge of that property and, and certainly on the properties, um, that are, um, residentially developed at, at this time. Uh, moving along, we're going to jump over to thirty-two goes back out, um, essentially on where Hampden Road and Sylvester Street um, are located. And again, that's more or less, uh, seasonal view that once the leaves are fully out, uh, would not be visible, but certainly when the leaves are off the trees, the top of the tower, um, would be seen. Thirty-three is just there to represent that as you kind of move one way or another in that general area, the tower kind of drops out of view. And, and that's one thing I'd like to mention in having been doing this for over twenty years. I think there's a perception that we all have that, boy, if you build something that's a hundred and twenty-five feet tall, that it's going to be seen from everywhere in the area. And that, that's just not the case because there are obstructions. Um, here we have relatively, uh, flat terrain. So it really is a matter of, uh, the tree cover that is providing most of the benefit of shielding some of the views. Uh, when we get to number thirty-four, this is incorrectly, um, labeled. That is not Hampden Road. That's actually Silver Fox Lane. And that again is the end of a cul-de-sac. And as you can see, certainly from the public locations, um, that the balloon and the tower itself are kind of buried in those trees. Certainly the, the views would change as you move on to that property. And if you moved, uh, kind of behind where the photo was taken. Um, those are the nearest views of the site. What I might ask to do is to go to the south. If we were to go down to photos eight, nine and eleven, that's, those shots were taken from Somers Road and Mill Road and Route eighty-three at that, uh, triangle intersection. It's essentially out in front of the property itself. And, um, I would say that, uh, if we go to the next one, actually nine, that, that is the one that, it's a wide open shot. Um, not, not a lot you can do to hide the tower from some locations, but that is our landlord's property. Uh, but that is probably the starkest, uh, view of the tower that, uh, would be, uh, achieved in terms of anybody driving through in that area.
Do members of the board wish to see other locations? I'd like to see, um, I think you had three sites on Route one eighty-six.
Yes.
Can I see those?
Sure. Those would be in the thirty-nine through forty-three. And then I would also say we should probably take a look to the east as well because there are some varying distances there. These are actually, uh, all of these are, uh, three of these four shots are actually, um, not visible at any time of the year just because of distance and intervening, uh, tree cover and vegetation. But if we go to number forty-two, that is a small area of visibility, uh, where it is tucked with, uh, you can see the, the red arrow actually depicts
Okay.
where the balloon is. And so as you can see, in this case, we have the backdrop of the hills. And so you don't have that silhouette where the tower is just popping up, uh, against the sky itself. If we could go to fourteen, fifteen, and then we'll move up to eighteen, that's to the southeast and the east. And it kind of frames again the near view visibility, uh, locations. So again, this is a distance, it's just over half a mile away. And, um, you can see the tower as it would protrude probably twenty feet or so above the tree line. Uh, fifteen is a little bit closer, so you'll start to come in. Um, that's probably a landmark that everybody recognizes. Once again, the balloon being pointed out with the red arrow and then the corresponding photo simulation. And then eighteen would be worthwhile just taking a quick look at because again, this one, uh, again, somewhat buried in the trees, but it is a near view. It's, it's less than four tenths of a mile away, just over quarter mile away. But as you can see, in this case, those evergreens are doing a fairly good job of breaking up the direct line of sight. Um, I would just move to the north to number twenty-one, which is another visible shot. And that's at the intersection of Parker Street and Hampden Road. Uh, and there the tower can be seen protruding above the tree line from there.
Members of the bo- members of the board wish to see others? Okay.
I just like, yeah, just, just so, um, people are conscious of what they see when they're, you know, in these areas. If you go to twenty-five first.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. I was, that's what I was gonna go as well. We, we do want to show that there is some existing infrastructure.
Yeah, the wires, the poles, I mean, they're, they're everywhere. And these are in almost every photo you see them, but they're, they become invisible to us or, you know. So when you, and not, and nine too. I mean, we just don't realize what we're, what's in our view, um, half the time. So, um, yeah.
I know. Yeah, there's also to the south, a transmission corridor that runs through this area. So again, um, it's just to kind of put everything into somewhat perspective for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fryman, do you have other presentation?
Now that completes our presentation and we're all available for questions.
So, uh, before we open up for a public hearing, just, uh, last chance for, uh, board members before we open it to the public. Mr. Kingston?
Yes, I, I, I guess I'm confused. Um, when I go to Verizon's website and I looked at the coverage map, I don't see anything like the coverage gaps that are shown, uh, in tonight's presentation. Uh, they seem to show that four G is available throughout that area. Um, and so I'm confused as to why what they put out publicly on their website differs from what we were shown tonight. When I go to, also when I go to T-Mobile's site, I noticed that they have five G coverage throughout this area. We all know that five G is a shorter range, uh, system than four G. But, uh, T-Mobile claims they can do it with the existing towers. So I, I would really like an explanation of the difference between what I'm seeing on the publicly available, uh, coverage sites and what I'm seeing tonight.
Kip, if you could address that?
Yeah, hi. Um, I thi- I think it's, it's mostly due with marketing. Um, I'm not instantly aware of the frequencies that they're showing that you're seeing. Um, I'm showing you a little bit more in depth of our first tiered neighbors and what they're producing. Um, and I'm not, um, I, I can't speak for T-Mobile, but I know that our proposed site, there's all have both four G and five G coverage that we are looking to, to grow.
Well, I mean, I'll be blunt. That's not much of an answer. So, uh, other questions from the board before I open to the public?
In case the worst should happen, is there room enough for a, of a fire vehicle to get down there and maneuver?
Greg, can you address that?
Uh, yes, this is Greg, Greg with Chapel. Um, yeah, I mean, the, the, the road can be designed to a twelve-foot width. It's going to be a, a, a hard con- compacted gravel road as opposed to a paved, a paved surface. But the, like I said, the terrain is, is, is very forgiving. So it's, you know, i- i- it can absolutely get, you know, you know, an emergency vehicle down all the way back to the, to, to the compound in the event of, you know, of something like that needed.
Greg, would we put a cul-de-sac in? There has to be a certain radius so that a fi- a, a fire, piece of fire equipment can make a turn. Um, is that going to be sufficient the way that you have a design?
Um, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to do like basically a hammerhead down by, down by the, the, the compound itself, which I believe really would be used by the vehicle when the vehicle is exiting after the event is, is.
Okay.
Um, you know, so you can, you know, I mean, we could, we could, you know, make. You know, so you can, you know, I mean, we could, we could, you know, make the, the final approach to the compound a little, a little, you know, more, more forgiving of a, of a radius. And that's something that I can very easily do, you know, for, for, for that. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty good point. And with this parcel and, and the terrain, we absolutely have the flexibility to do that with.
I'm familiar with it. I've been down there about seventy years. So I didn't see a report from the fire department. I don't know if one is required, but certainly there should be a common gate key and access for the fire department and room for them to maneuver. You know, if the generator goes up or one of your electrical boxes goes up, they, they require normally a cul-de-sac, like I said. So you have other things that have other requirements have to be met. So I'd like to see a report from the fire department.
So just Bethany, can you respond to that?
Sure. So the fire department did review this application and they stated they have no concerns.
Okay, good. That answers my whole question.
So I would like to now open the public hearing, the firsthand, Cassandra?
I'm kind of feeding off the gorgeous question in regards to the capability of the tower and the service like is provided. So like he mentioned how T-Mobile has the five G coverage now and it's becoming more of a thing. If this tower is only a four G capability, will there be a possibility of adding five G to this tower? Or does that mean that further down the line as technology advances, we would need to add more poles?
No, so this tower will have five G capability and four G capability. And I believe, if I may touch back again, what it was that I meant to say is that the, the Verizon coverage maps that are shown, I believe they're at a lesser signal level than what I'm showing you at. So I'm showing you have a higher, more reliable indoor service in our maps, which is obviously at a higher frequency. So then they attenuate more. So there we, I, I can't say whether or not there will be more sites added throughout at any point as network grows. But for right now, for these needs now, this site will have everything we need to improve service in this area and to offload our surrounding sites in the surrounding areas to better improve service for, for others as well.
Thank you for the.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Vivian. Could I just sort of clarify a little bit?
Okay, one, one item, and then I'm going to open it up to the public. Yep.
Got it. So yes, this tower, the, the array that's proposed is including both four G and five G antennas. So there won't be a need for another tower in this location. And then the discrepancy between, say, the marketing maps and the coverage plus that we're showing is a difference between in-vehicle coverage, which is currently provided. What we're targeting for coverage is in, in building coverage. So it's a higher threshold.
Thank you. So I am going to open it to the public in the firsthand that has been up for a while has been Dr. Daniela Laber or Laberry. So if she could be brought into the meeting. Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. My name is Daniela Labar. I live at nineteen Silver Fox Lane. My house was pictured many times in that presentation. I appreciate the street view of what that tower would look like, but the view from my backyard is very different. If you notice some of the pictures that were shown, you can actually see my house from the house on Route eighty-three, the White House with the goo from those pictures. So the tower is going to be visible, Mr. Torsha, from the backyard of my home. It would also be visible from fourteen Silver Fox Lane, who is my neighbor. I'm also really concerned that there's been no talk of health or safety for the people around this tower. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but there is an article that was published for Pittsfield in Pittsfield about health issues from people in the area of the tower that was put there and how they are actually asking Verizon to remove their tower. And Verizon is not being compliant. So they're looking for legal action right now, from what I understand. And, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned about the safety. This is close to a school. I'm wondering if any of our other towers are as close to a school as this one. Mountain View School is just right down the street from where we live as well. So I'm concerned about that as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next person with a hand up is Cindy Normanin. If I didn't say that correctly, I apologize. So Cindy, we can.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can't see.
See me? Okay. My name is Cindy Normandin. I'm one of the butters to the property, and I'm one of the people that has one of the big agricultural fields there. And one of my concerns is what Mr. Kingston was mentioning is that it basically erodes my property value if I ever do want to develop that land. And because it's so close to the field there, I don't think anybody would ever want to build a house there. I also feel that there's other places in town across from that site essentially like in the back of Squire Farm or where the gas line is or the electrical is off Summers Road there that would be more appropriate rather than in the middle of this residential area. We, and we have fine cell phone service at where, where we live, and we're just two doors down. So. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, great. Appreciate it. Marilyn Richards.
Okay, can you hear me?
And good to see you.
Marilyn Richards, three forty-two Pinehurst. I was a former member of the planning board and I'm currently on the town council. I have a couple of questions, please. I have the electronic file here of the proposal. I'm looking at the lot, the rectangular lot. It is five hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet. I calculated about twelve acres. Is that correct? Anybody?
I'm looking for the acreage. I have it in feet.
All right. Well, let's assume my math is correct. Doctor, I mean Attorney Fryman, you mentioned that the access road would be off of Meadow Brook. As I'm looking at this parcel, are you used, or will they be using the driveway of the residential house? Or is there, is it going to go along the easement?
No, it comes in starting from the existing driveway and then we'll expand that to go beyond the house to the site.
Okay. And my third question is, it's my understanding that this parcel either totally or substantially has been under tax classification of sixty-one A. And with that, it's, it's also my understanding that the town has right of first refusal to purchase this property in the event we see fit. Now, where is your project within that process?
So I'm going to ask Bethany to address that. She had a discussion with town council today about that. Bethany, can you jump in?
Sure. So short and sweet. And Attorney Fenton can, can address this as well. The applicant will likely address this issue after the approvals from the town regarding the zoning are, are approved or secured. Town council is not sure the passive use of the Monopole would trigger the, the need for for a change in the chapter land designation if the majority of the parcel continues to be used as agricultural.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for attending. Philip A. Bear.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you. Now we can. Yep.
Hello?
You were there. Yeah, you were there for a sec.
For some reason, I.
So Mr. A. Bear, we can, I believe we can hear you, but we don't.
For some reason, my speaker is not working.
No, we can hear you. Hello? Mr. A. Bear, can you hear us? Hello? So we can see you and I believe we can hear you.
Russ, I'm not sure he can hear us.
Okay. Hello? Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us to try to get Mr. A. Bear in here. Appreciate it. Mr. A. Bear, can you, yes, can you hear the board, Mr. A. Bear? Well, while, while hopefully he's trying to fix that, there is a H-two-zero-SK that can be brought into the meeting.
Yep, I'll do that. Hello?
Hello? So whoever is H-two-zero-SK, you, we cannot hear you nor see you. Well, let's try.
Mr. A. Bear is back. Let's see.
Okay, let's try Mr. A. Bear. Thank you all for sticking with us.
And through the chair, if anybody's listening in and having trouble with the video, you can also call the phone number that's available on the agenda.
So Mr. A. Bear, we can hear you.
Okay, it's Phil A. Bear, seven Silver Fox Lane.
Yep.
I just wanted to, to express my opinion in the sense of that I agree with Dr. Laber there as far as I, I had a health issue. And I was wondering why the presenters or petitioners did not address the health issue of cell towers, given today's environment. And especially going from four G to five G, it's going to increase the power generated from that mic, that RF transmitter tower greatly over existing four G and being approximately within a half mile of a school or one of our elementary schools and putting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood, that you didn't address the health issue at all in your presentation. I was just curious, why not?
Well, we'll ask him right now if they wish to address that.
Okay, well, first of all, we have to comply with the federal regulations for, to get the license to get the federal license to operate the tower. So we are strict, we have strict requirements of the level of RF that can be emitted. To adjust the, the matter in Pittsfield, there was an independent study done, I think, both by Verizon and by the town and they, city, and they found that the level of emissions was about one fiftieth of what is allowed by the federal government. So under the Telecommunications Act, towns and municipalities are not permitted to regulate based on health issues because of the federal level of restrictions and rules and laws that we have to follow. So, so we couldn't, we couldn't even be on air unless the tower is in compliance with the federal regulations for emissions, for RF emissions. So that's the level that it's reviewed. And, and it's been deemed by the federal government that the, the towers do not present a health risk. And they're, throughout, you know, they're everywhere. So we live with them everywhere we go right now. So.
So essentially, you're, you're saying you couldn't put a tower up unless it was approved by the federal government and.
We have to have our license, which we, we did submit with the application so that we have to have our license to, our FCC license to operate.
Okay. Mr. A. Bear, do you want to follow up with that?
Yeah, only thing I would like to say is that we all know the federal government has their regulations and that many times that the Verizon towers have exceeded it. Is there any process involved where there'll be testing as you build this or operate this facility or apparatus to, to, to maintain the, the state within those regulations? Because it's well known that, that you're, those towers do operate above the federal regulated levels.
Attorney Fryman?
Verizon's do not. And I think Kip, if you want to talk about the, the monitoring, but we do have twenty-four-seven monitoring. We have a technician that comes. So these towers are, the antennas are closely monitored. So Kip, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we do not operate above the FCC limits. They control the power that we use, the frequencies that we use. We go through iterations and iterations of testing before we ever turn on a site to make sure that we are compliant with the FCC regulations.
Thank you.
And we do, this site in particular, as most of our sites operate at a fraction of the power allowed by the FCC.
Thank you for your answer. Next person is Dr. Laber.
Oh.
H, okay, H-two-zero-SK. Okay. So H-two-zero-SK, we can't hear you or see you.
All right.
Okay, Dr. Laber, please.
Hi, it's me again. I did just want to add. I am a school employee here in town. I'm the school psychologist at the Eastland Meadow High School. And as you know, we were remote last year. And I did my job very efficiently from my home with no problem in cell service whatsoever. So I'm not sure the accuracy. Somebody had mentioned that the Verizon website looks a lot different for coverage. I'm tending to maybe agree with Mr. Kingston on that. I made upwards ten to fifteen phone calls a day with no concerns at all for a year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to give one more shot to H-two-zero-SK. Okay, so I don't see any other hands up that might wish to be heard on this matter. What is the board's pleasure with respect to the public hearing? Mr. Kingston, I believe you're muted.
I would, I would like to ask, conditions that have to be met, should we continue the public hearing?
Well, let's, let's, let's see if we can get some questions answered first. Mr. Kingston.
Got two questions. Actually, a question and something I'd like to share. The first question is, this is, the applicant is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. What is actually the relationship between Selco Partnership and Verizon Wireless? Because I know the tower on Benton Drive has gone through at least three owners since it went up, probably more. And we've had issues there, both on conservation and on DPW as ownership changed. And I, I'd just like to know whether this is actually going to be owned by Verizon or whether they're leasing it from an independent organization.
This will be owned by Verizon Wireless, by the corporation.
Okay, thank you. Can I share my screen?
Yeah, you can be able to, George.
Let me know when you've got it.
Well, just, just before we get into that, George, so there's no other speakers with their hands up with respect to the public hearing. We, we still, the applicant still needs to make some revisions to their plans pursuant to the comments that were received from Mr. Christiansen at the DPW. So what is the pleasure with respect to the board as it relates to the public hearing? Do we wash, do we want to close the public hearing? Well, no, we can't close the public hearing if we're going to take additional testimony.
Right.
And that testimony.
I'd feel more comfortable keeping it.
On the DPW, yeah.
We need to, we need to continue it.
Okay, so do we, do I hear a motion?
A motion made to continue the public hearing.
Until.
We can do it.
So Bethany, the next date of our board will meet is when?
November 16.
Why, why November 16?
There's an election date on the day we would normally have it on the beginning of the month.
So is it to the 16th, Mr. Punderson? Is that your motion?
Yes, it is. I may not be here. I may be in the hospital that day, but that's my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, George.
Any discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion to continue the public hearing, although we will continue to ask some questions this evening. By roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye to the 16th.
Yeah, Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Aye.
And I, and I'll be a yes as well. So your second question, Mr. Kingston.
Yeah, I wanted to share two screens with you. To me, the major issue here is whether or not we have a critical gap in cell coverage. And the first screen I'm going to show you, let me know when it comes up, is Verizon's network coverage in our area. The dark red is 5G, the orange is 4G. I don't see any coverage gaps on that at all. Does everyone see that?
George, I'm not able to see it.
Can you see it?
No, no.
How do I share the screen?
Go to screen share. Down the bottom, share screen. You see that?
Okay, let's try this. Share screen. Got it. Okay, there we go. Okay, can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the Verizon coverage, dark red is 5G, orange is 4G. I don't see any coverage gaps. Okay? And then this is T-Mobile and it shows all of this being 5G. Okay, so T-Mobile has figured out how to do this apparently. Verizon has not. Again, the issue, if the issue is critical service gaps, none of their publicly published the coverage maps on their websites is showing that there is a critical coverage gap. And I think that that's an issue that we need to think about.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that these maps are not part of our testimony and they're not, you know, part of our application. We don't testify as to these. And we do certify to the information that we have submitted and that were, you know, explained to everyone tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Mr. Punderson.
I can, I can tell you right now, I live on Pease Road and I could tell you my service is terrible. And I can also vouch for somebody else that lives on the corner of Lee Street and Pease Road. The service is terrible and all the way down Lee Street. We're at the bottom of the hill and the coverage does not come from the water tower. Comes from Turnbridge property over in Hampton. And it compromises us and it compromises the coverage there. And anybody that wants to dial 911 and can't will be very glad that this coverage is going to happen.
Okay. All right, so. So we have continued the public hearing to, we'll call it six o'clock at, on the 16th of November. So Attorney Fryman, if you could be so kind. I do believe that you should, although, although you just mentioned that it was not part of your presentation and you've certified to the coverage and so forth. I guess we would love to hear a response to what Mr. Kingston did just put up. I think that would be very helpful. I think it would be very helpful if you could address further the standards necessary that you referenced about meeting before you could put up a tower as it relates to Dr. Le Bear's comments about health issues. That would be very helpful. Who, you know, who, who, which federal agency oversees it, which federal agency approves your application? Just so that we can have all of that specifically in the record to help us make a decision. I think those are two specific things. Fixing the requirements that were noted by Mr. Christiansen from the Department of Public Works to still need to be put up on the plans. That needs to be looked at and corrected as well. Bethany, did I miss anything? Those are three major things that we heard.
Mr. Chairman.
And by the 16th, the zoning board of appeals would have had their meeting already. So that might also be taken care of.
Mr. Torsia.
The other thing I just maybe would, if the applicant would be able to provide this for the November 16th meeting is, you know, just kind of in that green and yellow area. I mean, how many people would actually maybe be benefited from it? That just might be helpful to like, put a number to the number of people that would be, that would see their coverage go up, both like in a very significant way or even in a general way and that, that yellow color that we saw from the maps. So.
Yeah, that goes, that goes to the issue of service degradation. So.
Or even the businesses, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but even the businesses that we mentioned on Benton Drive that would see maybe, you know, how much more benefit would they see with kind of less pressure taken on? Just to give us kind of an idea of what the actual benefit would be and the necessity that, that it would, would give or that it has would be really helpful. So.
Because you're, you're lifting many boats rather than just a few, I think that would be really important to say.
Also include Hampton.
Sure. Okay. Okay, all right. So I don't think there is any other business in front of us with respect to this application. I see a hand up from Lauren, but we have voted to continue the public hearing until the next meeting on November 16th. So we could hear your testimony at that time when we reopen the public hearing. So, okay, so I think we're done with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Good night, Ellen.
Mr. Torsia, next.
Thank you.
Mr. Torsia, next item. Mr. Torsia, next item. Jonathan?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. I just lost the, the audio for a moment. All right. Item number seven, continued public hearing case DN 2021-03, ground mounted photovoltaic installations by law amendment for the purpose of amending and clarifying on Meadow zoning bylaws, section 7.5, ground mounted photovoltaic installations and schedule of uses, section 3041, ground mounted photovoltaic arrays by adding language permitting ground mounted phot. So you just. Installations in residence zoning districts, petitioner Eastland Meadow Planning Board continued from September 21st, 2021 and October 5th, 2021.
So in anticipation of tonight's meeting, I spoke at length with Bethany. As you might recall, at our last meeting, we had multiple requests of her for information to be able to provide us. She was not able to gather all of the information that we wanted to hear from her. She assures me that she is diligently working on that. As I can see her shake her head. So might I suggest that we reopen the public hearing? If there's someone who wishes to speak on it, great, but that we then move again to continue the public hearing to November 16th, at which time Bethany would have much more information for us to be able to digest. So I will reopen the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak about it, please raise your hand. You can be brought into the meeting. Not seeing anyone. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing?
So I'll move.
Go have a second.
Second, George.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Any discussion?
What?
By roll call, Mr. Punderson.
What, what date we're going to continue to?
November 16th.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. I will tell the board that I have absolutely every intention to deliver to the town council, if at all possible, by the end of the calendar year, a proposal for their consideration relating to the solar bylaw. I think it's important that we, we continue to pursue this, get it right, but also be able to present something to the town council by the end of the year.
Okay.
I don't know when to ask this, a clarifying question, I guess, about like wording or really the wording about the the solar panels. So you know the solar panels that some people have, they're not ground mounted necessarily and they're not on a building, but they're the car coverage ones? You know what kind I'm talking about?
No.
It's not like a parking structure per se, but it's.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Is that, does that fall under a ground mounted or do we consider that building?
Are you referring to a carport solar?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it falls into a gray area. We don't call it out in our zoning bylaws. So it goes first through the building inspectors review and interpretation. So far, we've been treating them as as I believe a site plan waiver for the industrial zones. I know Mayberry just put some up and I believe Cartamundi did.
Reminder building.
Yep.
Reminder.
Right now, they've only been proposed in industrial zones. So they've been going in as a site plan review or a site plan waiver.
Correction on that. We do have them in commercial zone.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, but we've treated them as a structure, as a building. So a carport was, was considered as a building. I think it was reminder, Russ, that we did that. Yeah.
Yeah. I think the only ones we do have that I'm aware of is the reminder, Mayberry. There certainly is one planned for Cartamundi. Am I missing one, one other one?
No, but Cartamundi and Mayberry are in industrial, industrial garden park. So it's allowed there to do ground mounted. It was the only one that I'm aware of that was not in an industrial area was the reminder, which we considered the carport as a structure. Okay. It was kind of a stretch, but that was what we ended up doing in the end.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good question, Cassie. Yep. Bethany, director's report.
I'm just one item for this week. We will be hosting myself and the deputy town manager, a civic fair that's open to everybody at the Council on Aging on Thursday. It will go from two sessions, one from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM and another from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's in person. We'll have a couple of different organizations from around the town to just give you a heads up of openings they have and opportunities within the town to get more involved.
Okay, any other business from the board members? I want to thank you. I thought our questions were outstanding for relating to the cell tower. It was clear that you all had reviewed all the materials very, very well. And it was wonderful to see our board in action. Mr. Punderson.
It sounds like it's one of these things we're just going to have to swallow anyway.
Well, we really shouldn't get too deep into it, but certainly is heavily regulated by the federal government.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. No other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
See ya.
Good night.